All right. Good evening. It's, good evening. It's six thirty. Um, today is March first. Um, this is the first meeting in March of the Michigan City Common Council, which is hybrid, bread and Zoom. I'm streaming live on my Michigan City Facebook page. I would like to call this meeting to order. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer.
We just identify the United States of America into the Republican Party.
Which is there.
I need to know what's about individual with liberty and justice.
Before we take the roll call, this is the last hybrid meeting under the Governor's Executive Order that expires on March fourth. Uh, until that time, so we are able to do this hybrid and have council members, um, you know, on Zoom and here live in person. And I just want to make acknowledgement of that, that we will have to follow under the guidelines. Um, uh, that were presented by the legislature after that time. Ms. Nyle up on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nyle up. Um, approval of the minutes. Everybody received a copy of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
So, can I go?
We have a, a, a motion by Sean Fitzpatrick, uh, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and the second by Don, Councilman Don Privilinski. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nyle up. Um, before we get to reports of committees, um, I would just like to acknowledge um, our new council, a legal council, um, Mr. Jewel Harris, uh, from the Harris Law Firm is now the council, um, legal council. Um, are there any reports of standing committees?
Uh, Madam President, just want to report that the Labor Relations Committee is going to be meeting with the FOP this Thursday, March the third at four P M. To continue contract negotiations.
Thank you. Any other standing committees? All right, um, Finance Committee meeting.
Madam President.
Yes.
Um, a, the Michigan City Finance Committee was called to order on February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, via Zoom roll call. Tracy Tillman Chair conducted the roll call. The following persons were present. Tracy Tillman, Paul Prespol- Paul Prespolinski and Councilman, um, Fitzpatrick was absent. Also in attendance was Fire Chief Legault. Uh, approval of the minutes from last meeting, regular meeting held February eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, motion to approve. Two yea, zero nay. Open issues, um, was to review claims and fund number two zero three one boy development, zero dollars. Review claims and funds number two zero four two, Riverboat for five thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Motion made by Paul Prespolinski to approve funds number two zero four two, Riverboat in the amount of five thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Second by Tillman, motion carries two yea, zero nay. Um, Chief Legault, uh, wanted to discuss to find out what would be some of the process or steps necessary to obtain um, an increase for the chief deputy due to the contracts that had extended the negotiations that took, took a while to obtain after we, after we approved the, um, Finance Committee, um, annual budget for the salaries for the year. Um, when the contracts passed it, um, it also then put approximately five of those positions, um, income um, over the current chief deputy's, um, salaries. Uh, Councilman, um, Paul Prespolinski asked if this matter could be, um, studied before making any decisions. Uh, Prespolinski made a motion to table matter indefinitely and requested an executive session. Um, that motion was seconded by Tillman, motion carries two to zero. Also, Tillman read the Michigan City Common Council Resolution Number Regarding the Encumbering the two thousand twenty-one purchase order to Baker Tilly Municipal Advisor LLC. Tillman asked if anyone from the Controller Office was in attendance. No. Tillman asks, why, why is there any inadvertently of the one hundred thousand dollars? Uh, Mr. Prespol- Prespolinski said that he would not pass this ordinance due to, uh, due to his understanding that this was passed last year. Tillman would like to know how could this amount have, was not paid out during that time? Um, Councilman Paul Prespolinski made a motion not to pay until we have received an explanation why it was not paid. And that was seconded by Tillman, motion carries two to zero. And, uh, just for the record, I do believe that, um, Controller Hoffmaster emailed out to the Finance Committee and the council, um, the explanation in regards to the encumbering of that one hundred thousand dollars. And also elaborated a little bit on, um, to, um, Chief Legault's, um, request to review or to seek an increase for the chief deputy. Um, the meeting adjourned at eleven eighteen A M.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions for the Finance Committee? I know that was a lot from the council. Yes, Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, I mean, are you guys going to take up, uh, something to, to fix that with the salaries being out of line? I know it was, you said it was tabled. I think it was tabled indefinitely. Uh, but are you guys planning on doing anything at, at some point in regards to, uh, making sure that, uh, you know, that the, the chief deputy is not being paid, uh, deputy chief not being paid less than his, uh, people that report to him? Is there any plan to make this up?
If I may, uh, Madam-
Yes.
President.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, as I stated during that meeting, it was addressed and conveyed to Chief Legault that we will have an executive session. Um, so that, um, the Finance Committee could have discussion and those that needs to be involved, um, be in attendance for that session.
All right. So we're asking for an executive session, um, but nothing has been present, presented to the council for an additional appropriation, has there?
No, there has not.
All right. Um, so I will, um, reach out to the Controller's Office and, and the Mayor's Office, um, inquiring about that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Don Privilinski.
Oh, yeah. This isn't necessarily for the Finance Committee, but I know it came up last meeting during the Finance Committee period is the, uh, line item explanation that the city council was supposed to receive for the, uh, entranceway culvert work, concrete work that was done at the F O P um, club on Highway twenty. And we were assured that we were going to get that information, but I haven't received the information. I don't think anyone in the council has received that information. And as I said in, uh, the last council meeting, I'm not approving any payment of anything to Ruth Riley for this work until a line item uh, explanation is given to the city council, why it was done, the way it was done. Thank you. I just want to know, was that discussed at the, uh, Finance Committee meeting or?
No.
Has anyone heard any explanations of anything? Okay.
No, sir. Um, no one from the Controller's Office was in attendance.
Okay. So I, um, to the city clerk, I am making that request that for next consummating that the city council receives a, uh, explanation, a line item explanation of everything that was done out there and why it was done, the way it was. And I'd also like to have the, uh, the mayor and the city controller here to answer any questions that may come up at that time to get this issue explained and taken care of. Thank you.
All right. Is there a, any other additional questions from the council? All right. Is there, uh, all right. So we have our claim stock yet. Yeah, we have our claim stock yet for March first, two thousand twenty-two. Fund two thousand forty-two Riverboat claims for five thousand nine hundred seven dollars. And we don't have any, um, additional claims at this time for a total claim, total amount of five thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Um, do we have a motion to approve?
I saw move, Madam Chair.
Support. All right. We have a motion from Councilman Paul Privilinski and a second from Sean Fitzpatrick. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Matt.
Yes.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Till, uh, Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Right. Are there any reports of special or select committees? Any parts of, any special or select committee? Hearing none, um, reports of city officers or departments? I go quick. Are there any petitions, Ms. Nyle up?
There are no petitions this evening.
All right. Communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on February eleventh from Attorney LaPage addressing the tort claim for Kyle Kasmerzak regarding the process of insurance claims. Correspondence was also received in my office on February fourteenth from Attorney Christopher Kasmerzak for Katz, Corn, Cunningham and Law Office. Um, the LaPorte County Financial Analyst and Local Revenues, Local Funding Source Option Report was received in my office um, from Attorney Friedman on February twenty-second. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on February twenty-second that was sent to Mayor Perry and copied to the council for Nicole Baker, South Shore Line regarding clarification of planned work on the Double Track Project.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle up. All right. The first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only encumbering the two thousand twenty-one purchase order to Baker Tilly Municipal Advisor LLC. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Yes. All right. Is that Ms. Hoff? Yep. Controller Hoffmaster.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I, I just wanted to, um, clarify exactly what this is. Um, this is a, a purchase order that the council approved last year as part of the ARPA plan. We did encumber this purchase order, but when the exhibit was prepared for the original resolution, this line, this line was left off of the original exhibit. So all this is doing is a housekeeping measure, um, that is required by the Department of Local Government Finance that, that we have a resolution showing all of the encumbrances into the, um, New Year's budget. So this is, this is just correcting an error that was made on the original resolution where this line item was left off of the original exhibit. So that's what this is. There's nothing to be paid with this. Where, um, as Baker Tilly works with the city on the ARPA plan and with the E D A grant, they will be billing us accordingly. So this purchase order is needed to pay these future invoices that will be coming for the work they do for us. And I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions that anybody may have on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffmaster. Is there anyone else from the public that has a comment? All right. Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor.
Support.
And a second from Councilman, um, Gene Simmons. Um, Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle up. You can read the second resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only approving and authorizing the extension of the interlocal government agreement between the city and the Michigan City Area Schools for the years two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Prespolinski and Mr. Dabney.
Do the sponsors have any comments?
Yeah, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
This is a interlocal agreement that the city, whether it's a two-year agreement or a one-year agreement, uh, the city has been joining the Michigan City Area Schools for approximately twenty years now in this interlocal agreement. And presently, there will be two officers assigned to the school system. One will be working at the high school and the other one will be working through the, uh, middle schools, uh, the way I understand. Uh, and to me, it's just a proactive, uh, community approach to helping any young children, teenagers, uh, showing them a positive reinforcement and to, uh, help them out if they need the help. Yeah.
Any additional comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right. Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and we need a second.
Support.
And second by Councilman, uh, Gene Simmons. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right. Thank you. You can read our first ordinance on second reading and we will have a formal public hearing this evening, um, for this one.
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local road and street fund for the balance of the two thousand twenty-one miscellaneous paving project. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsor? Thank you. Any comments from the public? Well, this is a formal public hearing. Um, this was actually, uh, published in the Herald Dispatch, February sixteen, two thousand twenty-two. Um, I will open up this formal public hearing at this time. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public online? No comments. Any comments from the council? Hearing none. This will be held over for third reading. Ms. Nyle up, second ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending section two dash four six two, the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding membership on the Youth Leadership Commission. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Sean Fitzpatrick.
Are there any comments from the sponsors?
Not at this time.
All right. Comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right. Comments from the council? Hearing none. This will be held over for third reading. All right. Ms. Nyle up. First ordinance on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only creating section two dash three two seven in the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as a policy and procedure for declaring bad debt uncollectible. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Bryant Dabney and Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Are there any comments from the sponsors? Not at this time? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public on Zoom? Hearing none. Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have, we have a motion from Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Paul Privilinski. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle up. Our last ordinance, um, on third reading by title only.
An ordinance on third reading by title only creating section two dash three two six in the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as the capital asset policy. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and co-sponsored by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor? All right. Any comments from the public? Any comments on Zoom? All right. Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Um, we, we have a motion from Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right. So we are moving on to new business. Uh, Mayor Perry has asked the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment with Mr. Roger Potrats as member of the Michigan City Historic Review Board. And the term will continue and expire on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to, or advice and consent on this nomination? No?
I make that motion.
What's that? I'll second it.
All right. We have a, a motion by Councilman, uh, Bryant Dabney. Um, is that correct? I was, I wasn't looking.
Yes.
Councilman Don, uh, Bryant Dabney and a second by, uh, Councilman Paul Privilinski. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Uh, Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right. We are moving on to unfinished business. Um, tonight, um, the Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Community Enrichment Court. And the term will expire March thirty-first of twenty, it, no, this, this one expires March twenty, thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. And the incumbent is Ms. Connie Anderson. And I believe, uh, Ms. Nyle up sent out, uh, two emails to the entire council on a list of, uh, potential candidates that have submitted, um, forms for the Michigan City Enrichment Corporation. So at this time, I will open it up for nominations.
Uh, Madam President.
Um, yes, um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Um, I'd like to nominate Stacy Bennings.
We have nominations, Stacy Bennings. Um, this is just for nominations at this time. Yep. And I have Councilman Don, Don Privilinski.
Yeah. And I just have a question for clerk, uh, Nyle up. Is, did Connie Anderson fill out a, uh, form?
No, she did not. She decided that she wasn't going to pursue this.
Okay. Thank you.
Was there a second on Sean's?
Yeah. These are nominations. You don't need a, a second. We've been doing it that way, but we don't have to.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
So we have, do we have any additional nominations?
I'm sorry, couldn't, uh, I don't have the, have the email of all the names. Do we have the other names of the people that submitted for this?
Yeah, you can read them.
Okay. It's Jason Kirby, Daniel Hogan, Pastor Carol, Antoine Burks, Michael Vincent, Rodney McCormick, Kimberly Williams and Stacy Bennings.
Okay. I'll nominate, uh, Antoine Burks.
We have a nomination of Antoine Burks. Any additional nominations?
Yeah, I'll, I'll nominate Mike Vincent.
And Michael Vincent. Any additional nominations?
Yes, I'll nominate, uh, Kimberly Williams.
Councilman Paul Privilinski?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, nominate Rodney McCormick.
All right. Any additional nominations? With that being said, Ms. Nyle, do you have all those names?
I believe I do.
All right. Thank you. And we will be voting at the next council meeting on March fifteenth. Thank you. Our next order of business, um, the Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Fire Ameri- Commission and this is to, um, finish the term for Mr. Ricky Jackson, um, due to his resignation. And this term will expire on twelve, twen- twelve thirty-one of this year, two thousand twenty-two. And we have two nominations. We have Mr. Fred Adrian and we have Ms., Mrs. Desri, uh, I hope I said that right, Nichols, um, for, for, um, this position. So at this time, it's Nyle up, it would be a vo- a voice, uh, vote by each council member, whether it's Mr. Adrian or Mrs., Mrs. Nichols, and we will allow them to speak if they are present at this time. Uh, Mr. Adrian, would you like to say a few words? Come, come to the mic. Yes. And just state your name and your address.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, Councilman, my name's Fred Adrian. I live in three sixteen Decatur Street, Michigan City. I've been there, um, gonna be fifty-three years, I think it is. We've been married fifty-four coming up. Yeah, so fifty-three years. Um, my wife and I have unusual large family with nine children, four boys, five girls. They all graduated from Michigan City High School and are all gainfully employed now across the United States. Most of them are still in Newport County, except for two. But, uh, I'd really like to enjoy getting involved again in Michigan City. I'd retired three years ago from steel mill. And, uh, I was a Boy Scout, uh, Scout Master for nineteen years. And, um, I got involved in that quite a while and just something else to do and get involved. Um, I want to thank you very much for your opportunity. And, uh, if you have any questions, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh, for stepping up and, and applying for the position.
Thank you very much.
Uh, all right. Any, uh, is, uh, Ms. Nichols here? I don't think so. All right. Ms. Nyle up on the vote. And just state, uh, Mr. Adrian or Ms., Mrs. Nichols?
Ms. Tillman. Ms. Tillman.
Mrs. Nichols.
Mr. Dabney.
Nichols.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nichols.
Mr. Matt.
Nichols.
Ms. Deitch.
Ms., Mrs. Nichols.
Don Prespolinski.
Fred Adrian.
Mr. Simmons.
Mrs. Nichols.
Ms. Jagus.
Adrian.
And Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Mr. Adrian.
We have three for Mr. Adrian and six for Ms. Nichols.
And thank you, Ms. Nyle up. We have several nominations. Um, we have a, well, we have an issue with a, a couple of these. So we have, um, nominations for the social status of African-American males with expirations that expired last month. Uh, we have Ms. Allen who has, um, sent us a resignation acknowledging the fact that minority health partners will not um, participate as a seat on that board. So there will need to be an amendment. And, um, I, I know that Council, um, Woman Tillman, um, is, uh, on that commission as well. So I know that something has to be amended there. Um, Dr. Wendell McCollum, have we received anything from the school system or any, um, higher education, uh, institution?
No, we have not.
Um, and then we have Ms. Latiana Troutman, um, who resigned, but I thought we, we received a letter from Ms. Fay Moore um, already to fill that position.
Um, Fay Moore was appointed by the mayor.
Okay. So, but you have on here resigned. Isn't she filling that seat as the N double A C P representative?
By the mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So can you remove that? And do we need to vote on that?
Because the council has to appoint that person.
Right. So there's two N double A C P.
So many. I'd have to go back and look at yours. But, um, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Fay Moore is replacing Ms. Latiana Troutman for the NAACP, I thought.
That is not what the letter that I received from the mayor appointing Fay. I'm not sure who Fay was replacing, but I, it was the mayor's appointment, not a council. So I can check on that too.
Yes, and if Councilwoman Tillman would also follow up on that as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we, so are we looking for another organization to take that seat on that commission?
That will be up to the council and whatever that amendment that comes. If someone presents an amendment to make an update to replacing that organization, it'd be up to the council to make that decision.
Thank you.
All right, any comments from the, from the public? Any comments? Yes. You have someone on Zoom?
First, I think that end of the NAACP seat on the, on the social status of African-American males, I believe that's a council appointment by ordinance, not a mayoral appointment. But I got a few things I want to talk about. First, I think there's something that really needs to be recognized is that today is PFC Danny Bruce Day in Michigan City. It was on this day fifty-three years ago, March first, nineteen sixty-nine, that PFC Danny Bruce paid the ultimate sacrifice while serving our country during the Vietnam War. PFC Bruce was the brave young eighteen-year-old Marine from Michigan City that was posthumously awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor by President Richard Nixon. Secondly, I want, I want to make everybody, let everybody know that LaPorte County is going to be conducting a live in-person Commissioner's deeds sale on Tuesday, March tenth, at the community building, the LaPorte County Fairgrounds at ten a.m. A list of the properties that are up for bid and the pre-registration can be found at the sriservices.com website. That's the company that conducts the tax sales for the county. But basically, that means that if anybody skips three of their property tax installments, LaPorte County Yarder is gonna sell their property. There's probably about a thousand people packed into that building on, on that day to bid on properties. I'm going to be one of them, I got my site set on one of them. For all the people that are delinquent on their taxes, you need to get into the treasurer's office and settle up. And for all the lean buyers, here's a great opportunity to get on, on a nice piece of property. There's, there's probably about three hundred Michigan City parcels on the sale. Also, the number three thing I want to talk about, and I'm proud to announce that Michigan City High School Boys Basketball Team was successful in their game right before the meeting against Michawaca in the Plymouth sectional. They won fifty-three to fifty-five. They move on to play LaPorte Slicers Friday night. Once they dispatch to them, which they're expected to do, they're gonna go for the championship on Saturday night. So we want a big crowd there down in Plymouth when they win that championship. When they return back from Michigan City, it's gonna be the first sectional they've ever won in boys' basketball since the consolidation of Elston and Rogers. There's also four members of the boys' basketball team, there are also members of the football team that won the sectional and the regional last fall and November. So that'll be the first time that's ever happened in the same school year. So that's really exciting times for Michigan City High School and the team, the cheerleaders and coaches and everybody. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Fat Tuesday, and I'm Len O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any additional comments from, from the public? Anymore? Yes.
I just wanted to thank the entire council for the opportunity to serve you. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you, and I appreciate that too. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public? All right, comments from the council on Zoom? Any council comments on Zoom? Yes, Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you, Madam President. If I could just add a comment in regards to the nominations for the social status of African-American male to get a little clarity. The appointment for Mrs. Fay Moore, that was an appointment to the social status on behalf of the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
Not for the NAACP. So to my understanding, it appears that the NAACP would need a representative if they are choosing to continue on with the commission, and I do not believe that we've received anything from any education institutions or the Michigan City area schools as well. And we would need to discuss with the council, I'm sorry, with the commissioners. We have a meeting next Wednesday, so I will also bring this to their attention as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. Any additional comments from the council? Electronically? All right, council comments from, yes, Councilman Don, I mean, Paul Privilinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, I would like to thank Mr. Jackson for his service on the Fire Ameri- Commission, and also I would like to thank Mr. Adrian and, is it Ms. Nichols? And Ms. Nichols for stepping up to offer their services to the city of Michigan City. And I would I would like to bring up to the council's attention and the public that I'm looking at a resignation letter for our city engineer. And I, I just want to say that I think that Mr. Wright has done a admirable job for his service to the city of Michigan City and for everything that he has done with all the different aspects of being a city engineer. I think he's a listener and a very fair-minded individual. I think it's a very and also he saved us a lot of money over the, over his service, and I really am really put back by look, look, getting this letter of resignation, and I hope that the administration can try and will work something out with Mr. Wright. And now, now I would like to also get into shortly two subjects. One is a, one that's been burning and running, going around in the county is this lit tax. And I, I just wanna, I just wanna say this, that I believe that at this time, there's other avenues to take in that the city of Michigan City is the main contributor to that tax. And then I think that we, we have opportunity to do things with riverboat money. But also, I just can't see taking money out of people's pockets at this time. Or really, I, I do have a problem with, with the whole concept of this tax. And I do not understand why you want to take this money out of the economic engine of the county. And that, that's a big, big thing with me, and also that how much it will, I mean, have we heard how much of an impact from any kind of I would say the people that were working on it for the county sender and sender, but I just don't think it's a good avenue to take at this time. And also, I would like to remind the general public that, and I think the council members, that when the original docking ordinance was passed, I was on this city council. And we saw it to benefit the whole county and all the towns in the county got a stipends out of that money. And, and that's actually how the county gets their money. So I know that, I don't know exactly how much of a reserve they have, but there's other avenues to accomplish the goals here. And al- also, I was in attendance by Zoom at the last Board of Works meeting. And I believe that the public has a right to comment on issues at the Board of Works meetings. Now, I don't know, I haven't got deeply into it, what their rules they've adopted, but they, they need to change them so the public can comment on issues at the Board of Works meetings, because the last meeting, there was no ask for public comment on any items on the agenda. And I do know that boards and commission can pass their own rules. Also, that I think that the Board of Works should meet one meeting a month in the evening so the general public can bring their concerns to the Board of Works. Not meeting, a lot of people can't make that eight-thirty in the meeting, in the morning meeting. And I, I just want to put that out there, and I think that, you know, we need to be transparent. Everybody needs to be transparent. And Mr. Wright, White, excuse me, I'm not commenting on previous boards, but what was going on right now, because I do know previously that public comment was taken at the meetings. So I hope that we can rectify this. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to welcome Attorney Harris to the team. And another note, it kind of sad and mean to see us losing another officer to another city. You know, we have another officer, which we've been trying to stop the bleeding, but it doesn't seem to be too effective. We hire them, we train them, we afford them the experience of working our streets, and then they decide that work in Michigan City streets is too much. That's the way I view it. So they go to another community and ride off into the sunset. We need to continue to address that issue and support MCPD in regards to losing all these officers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilman Simmons. Councilman Don Privilinski?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple items. Number one, to address what Councilman Paul Prespolinski was saying about the Board of Works meetings. And I've attended both Zoom and in person. But the Board of Works meetings, the public comment is at the very end, I believe, of the meeting. So after you get done talking about all the subject matter, the public comment is at the end of the meeting, which was there already voted on all the subject matter. And I did talk to City Attorney Amber LaPage if she would look at that and possibly get that changed. So after every subject or every important subject, however they want to classify it, they could have public comment. Moving on from that, first thing I want to talk about is the lit tax. And during the explanations of the lit tax, we've all heard that Social Security is not going to be a taxable income under this tax. So I called Andy Mouser, our consultant from Baker Tilly, and I said, well, what exactly are there other avenues that people can be taxed on that are retired? And what's included in that? And he said, yes, it's just not Social Security, they won't be taxed on, because that's all you hear as a sales, to me, as a sales pitch for this, that it says, and I'm gonna read it from exactly what Andy sent to me, and all the council members, there are copies sitting up here in your places, but what we'll do after, we'll have Ms. Nyle email the same verbiage that I have here out to each councilman so they can have it. Now, by me addressing this, it doesn't mean that I'm against this tax or that I'm for the tax. All I'm trying to do is provide the public with information that we've gotten and from our consultant on the taxable income that everybody will be taxed on. So, moving along. It says, "Local income taxes apply to the same kind of income as Indiana's adjusted gross income tax." And it says, "The only exempted items would include Social Security, a railroad retirement, or a combat zone pay." "Other types of income that would be subject to the lit tax could include wages, salaries, interest, dividends, alimony, business income, capital gains, traditional IRA distributions, rental real estate, royalties, partnership, S. corporation, trust income, farm income, and unemployment compensation." "Certain portions of pensions and annuities may be subject from the AGI." "There are certain deductions and credits available that typically reduce AGI below the sum of the above income." "As we discussed, income taxes and AGI can vary greatly by individuals, so while the above may provide some guidance, individuals would want to look at their own tax calculations and advisors to determine the impact that this tax will have on you." "The calculation of taxable income is a more complicated piece." "Individuals could look to their most recent tax returns to determine their current AGI." "Once AGI is determined, the calculation itself is fairly straightforward." "For example, fifty thousand, on fifty thousand dollars of taxable income at a half a percent, the result is an annual impact of two hundred and fifty dollars." So I wanted to share that information with everybody, with the council members. If you think it's worthwhile, it's there. But I thought it was informative. The next thing, as far as the lit tax goes, myself and Council President Deitch feel that, and we want to, and well, what we're gonna do is what we, we're gonna do it, is we want to put together two public meetings for this lit tax for the public to attend here in the council chambers. One would be in the evening, six, six-thirty-ish. The next one, we thought would be a good idea to possibly have it like around noon time, so folks that are off during the day, they could come turn, come during the day and express their opinion, whether they're for it, they're against it, or they don't care one way or the other. But that's getting back to what I know I mentioned at the last council meeting and a few other council members that they wanted to hear public input and what the public thinks about what's going on here. I know I've only received one email on this whole subject, and that was last week. So we are going to send out dates and times on the meetings. Not every council member, if you're available, fine. If not, you don't have to be there. We're just gonna take notes and hear what the public has to say about it, and then report back. I, I did talk to Council President or County Council President Randy Novak today because at the workshop that we had by Zoom, there kept, there was this March voting date that the county council was gonna vote on this in March. So, and Randy was very explanatory about it. He said that that was just a target date. Just a target date, nothing in stone or writing. He said what they would like to know is after we get done talking here this evening, because there's something else I want to bring up, that what the, what the Michigan City City Council, what their plans are as far as sending a resolution, what they want to do to hear from the public yet. So that's what Angie and I, we'll talk to. So that's what Angie and I, we'll talk to Randy and tell him what the council wants to do, not what her and I want to do, what our council wants to do. So, yeah, you know, I hear things, you know, I got to talk to the source. I got to get the information. I just don't listen to what people are telling me. And so anyway, so moving along from that, then at the last council meeting I brought, or the last, when we had our workshop, our Zoom workshop with the Mayor Dermody and Mayor Perry and the group, that I mentioned, well, why don't we send out a informational ballot in the water bills, just like they did for the dog park, and see what the public has to say about it? With that being said, and I'm not going to get into all the information of, you know, how soon it would have to be mailed out, and on what type of paper and on all that, because I got all those details. I called the water department already and got that information. I guess what I'm asking the council here this evening is if we think it is realistic, you think it's reliable, and do we want to go down that path of sending out something in the water bill, an explanation of this, and then ask folks to send it back? We tally it up, because it'll take a couple months to get this process down, and then come back with, you know, information that we think would be valuable to use in making a decision. So I am throwing that question out to the council, and however, President, you want to follow through with it, you know, if we want to take an individual vote, a group vote, or whatever. Just looking for guidance on what we want to do.
I think what we would have to do for something like that is put a resolution forth on the next agenda if we would like to do that. I don't want to impede on your, if you have additional comments, because I
Yeah, I still got a couple more.
Yeah, so all I'll say about that is that with the ARP money, there was a survey sent out to all the households, and I will say that maybe we get the numbers from the city on, you know, what the numbers are, what we get back, because I don't think those surveys, we get a good return on them. So that might be the only thing, if we have the public hearing, the public meetings, that may suffice versus sending out the mailer. I like the mailer idea, but all I'm saying is, I don't know if we'll get the return. And for the council to act on it, we probably would have to put a resolution on the next agenda versus asking everybody's opinion this evening. I guess legal counsel, that would probably be the right.
I think it would be.
Okay.
I agree.
But I'll continue.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you for your direction. You know, I was throwing a suggestion out, looking for direction on how we wanted to move forward with that. Okay, the next thing, so I've done this as far as the lit tax goes, but this here is very, what I think is positive news, and these city employees need to be recognized for what I thought was a very nice humanitarian gesture that they did. And that was, and we all got the email on it from Chris Yagelski last Friday about three refuse workers that worked for Michigan City Sanitary District. And I will mention their names, Richard Mitchell, Quandell Crawford, and Chris Carter. They worked the Boyd Circle route. And according to Mr. Yagelski, because he got a call back from the residents that live in that home, Mr. and Mrs. Sax lived there, who I know personally, he was my architectural drawing teacher, both in 11th and 12th grade in high school. And he's a fantastic teacher, him and his wife are fantastic people. But anyway, what this crew did, they always take the garbage container back up to the doorway, to the garage door, and this couple is, you know, a little bit up in years. So they did that, but then what Mr. Crawford did was he actually knocked on the door, on their front door, to see if, how they're doing, are they okay, because they haven't seen them, you know, in a while. And I think that that is above and beyond, and shows some real character and personal caring that not only Quandell had, but the whole crew had by taking their time to see how these folks were doing. That tells me that, you know, these folks are fantastic workers, and a pat on the back to everybody at the Refuge Department and Sanitary District for this type of action. And I know there's other city employees that do fantastic work, day in and day out, but I thought that this here was rather exceptional, just to take the time out and go knock on the door to see how they're doing. So, thank you, Richard Mitchell, Quandell Crawford, and Mr. Chris Carter, and keep up the great work. And Mr. and Mrs. Sax, I hope you're doing well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Privalinski. Did you, any other comments? All right, well, I have
I did, sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman Jigas.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make a really brief comment on the lit tax. You know, I don't believe the survey is the best way to get information back from the people and to the people. I think those public meetings are a great idea, and if you ask people, well, do you want me to increase your taxes? You also have to ask them, what do you think is the major problem that's facing Michigan City? And I know I heard from other elected officials from the state that the top issue is safety. So I just want you to think about that, whether, you know, two different sides of that story. And like, I really do think a well-designed survey would take too much time and effort, but to have public meetings where people could come and speak, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jigas. Anybody else? All right, couple of things. Thank you to the commissioners from different boards and commissions for participating in the last workshop. I just want to provide a couple of updates, and specifically for the council liaisons too, and the department heads. If you could make sure that these boards and commissions provide the clerk's office an updated contact list for those boards and commissions, that would be appreciated. We covered how they handle their monthly pay at that meeting as well, and there's some forms that they have to fill out each month for their payroll. So we want to make sure that the boards and commissions are following those guidelines, but also it's super important that they track, you know, who is at the meetings and provide attendance and their meeting minutes to our IT department and to the clerk's office. So we just want to make sure that they're doing that in a timely manner when they're having their meetings. Again, as, you know, you serve on these boards and commissions, we appreciate the time and the effort that you're making, but also as chairs of these boards and commissions, if you have individuals who are not making these meetings over a prolonged time period, you should notify your council liaison, because that's the seat where somebody who's really wanting to be a part of the community and a part of the process, we can fill that seat. I mean, if they're not going to be there, and nobody's going to be representing, I'd rather have someone else from the community who is willing and able to be there. And we're finding that, we're finding a lot of absences on multiple boards where people are not attending. And again, things come up, but we just want to make sure that the boards are functioning. And if you have any questions, reach out to the council. But also, read your bylaws and read the ordinances that govern your boards and commissions, because there are a lot of things that, you know, your bylaws may be different, just like Councilman Paul Privalinski earlier was saying, you know, you may have different rules than what the council has, and you may have your own bylaws. So it's important that you know what those are, I mean, that you get copies of those. So I just wanted to make note of that when you are having your meetings, that I know it takes time and effort, but we just want to make sure that you're doing things in order. Also, last month, you know, it's Black History Month, and we had several programs that were very successful, and I would like to thank the Black History Committee for Michigan City for the weekly webinars that they put on. But now we're moving into Women's History Month, and Naomi Adams, we're going to be having, there's going to be an event for Naomi Anderson, I said Adams, but anyway, they're going to do the dedication at West Scott Park on March 19th, and the Women's Commission has been working very hard in participating in that effort, and it's going to be 2:00 p.m. at the West Scott Park. So if anyone is interested, you know, please feel free, you know, to come out, and it's a beautiful, beautiful sculpture by Bernard Williams, I believe is the sculpture. But again, that's at 2:00 p.m. on the 19th. And other than that, springing forward, I think that's happening, not this weekend, but the next weekend, we'll be springing forward. So we're going to get longer days, and again, be prepared to lose that hour of sleep that you normally get. But again, thank you for your time this evening, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Councilman Privalinski, to call the favors.
All right.
Thank you. Have a good evening.